Okay, here we go, guys. I call to order the regular meeting of the City of Aransas Pass City Council April 4th, 2022 at 5:30 PM, and let's all rise for the invocation. Gary?
Oh, I didn't know that. Yeah, it's not scary. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for all that you have done for all of us in this community. We ask for your guidance as we make decisions tonight to impact all the citizens of this fine community. Special prayer, digressing on biblical, for all the people who are facing the turmoil of war. We pray for their safekeeping. Here in Aransas Pass, we again ask for your guidance in this meeting. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Let the meeting just tip the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna go to presentation and proclamations, and it's an update on the harbor bouquet with Javier Solis.
He's not here.
I talked with Javier, and he was, if we can put it off, because he said he's gonna be here, talk with him today.
Okay, well then, let's go to the board and commission appointments, which is the Coastal Bend Foundation.
There's one vacancy on the Coastal Bend Foundation, and that's the reappointment of Jay Addaway. It's for a two-year term. The term expires next month, and it'll go through May 31st, 2024.
I move to reappoint Jay Addaway to the Coastal Bend Foundation.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're gonna go to the consent agenda. All of the following, all of the following items of the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless the council members or request. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the February 25th, 2022 special meeting, the March 17th, 2022 special meeting, and the March 21st, 2022 regular meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're gonna go to the city manager, which is consider enact an ordinance establishing regulatory speed limits during construction along SH-35 to construct an overpass at Oak Lane within the corporate limits of the City of Aransas Pass and providing a penalty for the violation thereof.
Mayor and council, as you know, construction's going on out there right now on the overpass, quite a bit of construction, actually. This request comes to us from Tech Dot, and I'm assuming they may have been in contact with the police department. It's a construction zone speed limit they're requesting, and I think we're in favor of that. Is that correct?
Can we hold them hostage and say not until they put in a red light at Johnson and Commercial?
We will do that. Actually, we'll run out right now if you want to.
Yes. Yes. Say, we, we will agree to this when you put in a red light at Johnson and Commercial.
Well, I make a motion that we establish a regulatory speed limit during the construction along SH-35 to construct an overpass on Oak Lane within the corporate limits of the City of Aransas Pass and providing a penalty for the violation thereof.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're gonna go to development services, which is consider enact an awarding the contract for the Highland and Johnson drainage improvement to Lester Contracting Incorporated at the amount of $787,593.50.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. These two next items are all related to the TDBG DR grant money. These are the last two broadges left on there. We're bringing them both to you. The first one is Highland-Johnson. Highland is a section from Avenue 8 going to 1069. There will be a crossing underneath 1069 to get water out, and then the county's gonna continue that out to the slough to help alleviate all the flooding that happens in that area. And then Johnson will be the portion from Saunders to Commercial, replacing that entire storm system and repaving that road.
Okay, I make a motion to award the contract for the Highland and Johnson drainage improvements to Lester Contracting, Inc., in the amount of $787,593.50.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then we're gonna go to the next one, which is consider enact an awarding the request for proposals to Max Underground Construction LLC for the 13th Street, West Wilson Avenue, and West Nelson Avenue drainage improvement in a total amount of $475,167.
So this, like I mentioned, is the last piece of the puzzle for these grants. 13th Street would be from Palm Drive, right before Nelson, going south to Starter Ditch, replacing that storm drainage. And then Wilson and Nelson is a block each right around the school where they will be replacing the storm pipe completely.
Who's following up on these projects?
Michael Bonner, from our office.
Okay, yes, okay.
I make a motion to award the request for proposals to Max Underground Construction LLC for the 13th Street, West Wilson Avenue, and West Nelson Avenue drainage improvements in the total amount of $475,167.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, we're gonna go to public safety, which is consider enact and renewing the memorandum of understanding between the police department and the Children's Advocacy Center of the Coastal Bend.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is just a every-two-or-three-year agreement between us and the Children's Advocacy Center. They do our forensic interviews for sexually and physically abused children. Very, very rarely, sometimes special needs adults, stuff like that, that may also need special treatment. So we'd like to sustain that relationship. This helps with their funding and, and there are other procedures that keep them afloat and going.
I move to renew the memorandum of understanding between the police department and the Children's Advocacy Center of the Coastal Bend.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, we're gonna go to citizen comments. Citizen comments are intended for the matters that are not scheduled on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name and address for the record. Be advised that the Texas Open Meeting Act prohibits the city council from responding and discussing your comments. The law authorizes the following. Make a statement of factual information, recite existing policy, advise that the subject may be placed on the agenda for a subsequent meeting.
We have two people standing. Ladies first.
Okay, bring up the panhandlers again. They're multiplying. It's getting worse.
Can you state your names, sir?
State your name and your address.
Eric Woods, 111 Saunders Lane. I still ask this council to put up some signs. You'll see them in Corpus and many other cities about, nope, don't feed, don't give money to the panhandlers, give it to a charity instead. You can buy them online for 75 bucks a pop. You can install them, I bet, for under $200 each, and you probably only need five. Your worst spot is right out front here. The only way I can think of to move them off of there is to plant some bushes. You know, the ones that the police department recommend that are nice and prickly underneath your windows so thieves don't get in. Keep them cut nice and low across there, and that'll take care of at least that area. That's their biggest moneymaker, is right out front. They're recommending to their bum buddies that that's a great spot. I'll leave it to you guys. Like I said, those signs are cheap, they're made out of aluminum, and they're online, readily available.
Mayor, I, I can speak on that, if you don't mind, Mayor?
Sure.
Okay, so, Mr. Woods, we appreciate you and your son have, have tried to work and focus on that problem, and thanks for that as well. So just so folks understand, the city has been focused on this, you guys have been involved in that, and it's crazy to think of it, but there is a constitutional protection for panhandling. It's called expression. But I, I'm still going, yeah, it's their First Amendment right, and we've, we've done, explored that. The signage was approved, however, we're waiting on Tech Dot approval. We can't just erect signage along a Tech Dot right-of-way without their blessing. So Gary, I believe, said today he got the, it's looking, it's looking good, it's gonna happen. We have everything ready to go to erect that signage. And then you bring up another thing, and that is basically what we call in policing business, security by design. And that is, that is something that we can definitely look at. In fact, we've considered, how can we install obstructions that don't affect motorists, but will have an effect on loitering and stuff in these areas? Again, Tech Dot right-of-way, we're gonna have to work with them, but I'm gonna take focus on that with Mr. Isasi first thing tomorrow and see how receptive they would be to doing something like that. Maybe we can partner with them for the expense if they approve the installation. Good info.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jan Lambert, and I am from New Mexico, and I recently bought some property in the 600, 700 block of South Aransas, Saunders Street, sorry. Anyway, I went to look at my property, and it's got 20-foot mounds of dirt in front of it. I cannot see my property, let alone find the stakes for it. I visited with the city manager, and he told me that he would try to get it moved. He thought it was a contractor's, but then he found out it was the city's dirt. It is probably a fourth of a mile long, and you can't even hardly see any of the property there. I climbed to the top of it, and of course, I'm 82 years old, and that didn't work well for me. And anyway, I would like to know if something can be done on that, and if that street is going to be something besides just dirt. Right now, it's just dirt, and the dust is terrible. You can't even see out your car windshield if you let it set overnight. The cars are just up and down there, the kids are racing, it's like the Indianapolis 500 down through there, and there's nothing to stop them. And I don't, I don't know who to go to to ask about this, or if somebody can tell me if it's going to be paved. It is classified as a street, but right now, it's just wide open like a pasture, only it's dirt, and it's just blowing every place. My cat is coughing, coughing, coughing. Had to take her to the vet, and he said, "It's the dirt and dust from there," and she's an inside cat and never been outside. And so, I, I don't know where to go to next. Somebody suggested that I come here and bring it to somebody's attention, but these dirt mounds have got chunks of concrete and all kinds of bad things that somebody could really get hurt on it. But I'd sure like to get to my property. I bought four more lots there on the other side, and I'd like to know if there's gonna be a street, and if somebody could do something about the piles of dirt and let me find my land. I, I can't shovel and find my stakes, and I, I don't know where to go from here, so...
I have been in contact with Ms. Lambert, and she's absolutely correct in everything she says, and then contacted Fernando on that, and we are removing them, and I don't know what the timeline is on that. Just go ahead, I'm sorry.
We actually went in last Friday, and Christian was the one that went out with a truck to try to remove it, and the contractor said it was their dirt, and they were gonna be taken care of. They did not let it touch it. But, so is the contractor doing the storm that goes Deberry, Saunders, Greenwood? That's all a portion of the contract, and it says that was all their dirt, and they were gonna take it. Because we sent guys last week to start removing it, and they stopped them until I'm not... Because we sent guys last week to start removing it and they stopped them until I know that they're there and then they will take care of it.
If we could get with the contractor then and find out what the timeline is because Ms. Lambert does deserve an answer on that. We'll get an answer for you. And the contractor's going to have to move it very quickly or can they move it quickly?
I don't know. We were ready to start moving it last week, but they didn't let them take it. We'll give them and see what the.
Or if somebody could, could just spray the dirt and, and get some of that dirt and dust down it just a little bit.
We want to get rid of it for you.
Oh, well, I'd appreciate that too immensely.
Would you please address whether it's going to be paved or not to her, please?
It's not going to be paved. That's a portion that's undeveloped. There's no.
That's not even a street, is it?
It's classified as Saunders Street?
Yeah, it's a paper street.
It's a paper street?
What is a paper street?
It's documented right-of-way as their first street, but there's no actual street there.
So I'm not going to have an address when I put a house there?
There's no street there to put a house on.
So is that classified then as county?
No.
Well, I can't figure that one out. It's just going to stay that dirt and the kids are going to go, keep going up and down it?
Until the council decides to develop that area and.
I've been out there a few times and.
I'll let them comment, but we're not supposed to.
Yeah, the mayor's right.
Yes.
The, oh, we'll find, first of all, I want to get a timeline on removing it.
Okay.
And the, as far as the street goes, you're coming at a good time, actually, because we're about ready to enter budget.
Okay.
This is an exciting time for the finance director. She loves this time of the year. And I'm, we encourage citizens, this is, this happened last budget time. Someone wanted a street and they came to the particular budget meeting we had. Now, I can tell you what, what date that is. It's set as of last week. We said it. We'll meet with the council. You need to come to that meeting and make the case for that street going into the budget.
Okay.
It's not there right now, so.
Okay, no date on it yet?
Yes, I have one. It's just on my desk and I can't.
Oh, okay. I can call you then?
Give me a call in the morning and be happy to do, give you that date.
Okay.
And strongly encourage you to be there. That does carry weight.
Okay. I thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, now we're going, we're going to go into executive session and it's 5:47 and for Section 551.071 of the Texas Open Meeting Act to meet with his attorney to seek legal advice on a matter of which the duty of the attorney to the city council under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state law of Texas clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meeting Act relating to a complaint against contractor. And another one for Section 551.071 of the Texas Open Meeting Act to meet with his attorney to seek legal advice on a matter of which the duty of the attorney to the city council under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state law of Texas clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meeting Act and Section 551.072 deliberations regarding real estate property as it relates to property at 1104 North Houston, a two.
2,700.
2,708.76 square feet tract of land herein described as a drainage easement out of a culled 1.369 acre tract known as Lot 1 of the Perry subdivision, Aransas Pass, Texas. 5:48. 5:48. Okay, we're going to reconvene in open session to consider and take action, if any, on any item discussed in executive session, and it's 6:04.
Okay, I move to terminate building official services with Burl Smith, per the agreement.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to read the second one, or you want me to? Okay, and I make a motion that we authorize the city manager and city attorney to acquire the Sid right-of-way easement by any lawful means, including but not limited to negotiations on the property at 11104 North Houston, 2,708.76 square foot tract of land herein described as a drainage easement out of a called 1.369 acres tract known as Lot 1 of the Perry subdivision, Aransas Pass, Texas. The agreement is with Mr. Myron Schroeder and the city of Aransas Pass.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.